Welcome to the Free Town Board of Selectments meeting, today being August 20th, 2018, time being 6:01 PM. Is anyone recording the meeting?
Precamp.
Precamp, okay. On the agenda tonight, 6:00 PM, we have a Cody Drive, Nick Drive, Ethan Circle, and Riley Circle vote on intention to lay out the way and place as an article on the warrant. Also at 6:00 PM, discussion with resident James Sasha regarding creation of the Lake District on the consent agenda. We have approval of South Coast Bike Way Alliance pedal for the path for September 16, 2018, through town. Discussion/set dates and location for special town meeting in the fall. Open and close the warrant for the special town meeting in the fall. Discuss records management with Jacqueline Brown, town clerk. Discuss concerns with Fire Chief Gary Sylvia regarding Station 1 improvements. Approve ambulance abavements for the month of July 2018 as submitted by Chief Sylvia. Sign contract with Sylvia Engineering Associates PC regarding review of building files, no relation. Discuss/sign approval of exemption form for Special Municipal Employee Laura Ramsden to be placed on the file of the town clerk's office. Discuss approved request by Laura Ramsden to make Regional School Committee Special Municipal Employees. Approve town offices to go gold for the month of September as requested by Dawn Berrio. Town administrators report, we have nothing under the Board of Health. Personnel board sign change of status form for Megan McGinn, probationary call firefighter as submitted by Chief Sylvia, effective August 1st, 2018. Appoint Linda Fornia to Ton River Stewardship Council, effective August 16th, 2018. Appoint election workers as submitted by Jacqueline Brown, town clerk, effective September 1st, 2018. New business, dates of upcoming Board of Selectments meeting, Tuesday, September 4th, Monday, September 17th, Monday, October 1st, Monday, October 15th. And we have executive session, three things on the agenda tonight. To the Mass General Law Chapter 30, Sections 21a2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation to contract negotiations with union personnel, excuse me, with non-union personnel, Alexandria Golds, Administrative Assistant. Mass General Law Chapter 30a, Section 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the town hall, library, highway union, Free Town Firefighters Union, Signal Operators, and Free Town Police Union because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining positions of the public body and the chair so declares. And Mass General Law Chapter 30a, Section 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. If an open meeting has detrimental effect on a litigation position in the public body, chair so declares, Excel Recycling LLC versus Town Free Town. Okay. On the agenda, we're going to start actually with, we're going to start with the Lake District discussion first, and then we'll move on to the WU stuff with Cody Drive, Nick Drive, Ethan Circle, and Riley Circle. So Mr. Sasha, come on up. Please introduce yourself.
My name is James Sasha, resident of Free Town at 22 Girard Ave. And I have a six-minute video I'd like to play for the board, if that's okay?
Sure.
As concerned citizens of Free Town and Lakeville, together with Long Pond residents, it is our intent to form a lake district covering the Long Pond watershed. Long Pond and its surrounding waterways are being taken over by an invasive aquatic plant life and other invasive species that threaten the water quality to a point that within the next 20 years, Long Pond and the Assawamset Pond Complex will be dead and impassable. Most aquatic life will perish, and the drinking supply for Taunton and New Bedford will diminish. Rivers and streams will dam, and the properties upstream will flood. The invasive species life is fueled by nutrients that are non-native such as lawn fertilizer from rain runoff, improper septic systems, and silt infiltration from unpaved roads and the lack of storm drains. The death of this watershed is not speculation, it is a scientific certainty. Long Pond is the breeding ground for one of the largest herring run in New England, and one of the largest on the east coast. Herring consisting of both owlwives and blueback herring live in the Atlantic Ocean, through the Narragansett Bay, swim up the Taunton River, then upstream into the Namaskit River, then across the Assawamset Pond Complex, then under Route 18 into the Snake River, and across Long Pond in Lakeville, into Roundsville Cove in Free Town, where in a calm night, one can see hundreds of thousands of fins cresting the water as the herring spawn. The adult fish return to the ocean while the young follow in the fall. The invasive aquatic plant life is choking those waterways, and will surely cause the extinction of these fish and many other species of wildlife. Long Pond is also Massachusetts' largest recreational body of water. It supports businesses such as boating, fishing, gas stations, restaurants, marinas, water sports, liquor stores, vacation rentals, and more. Not having this resource will have a huge negative economic impact on Lakeville and Free Town, causing local businesses to suffer and property values to greatly decrease. Waterfront properties will no longer be able to be assessed as waterfront, costing the towns millions of dollars every year. Long Pond through its tributaries is the largest supplier of water to the Assawamset Pond Complex, which is the water supply for over 150,000 residents of Taunton and New Bedford. These cities combined draw an average of 18 million gallons of water every day. Doing nothing to eradicate the invasive plants will surely cause the water supply to diminish, forcing those cities to turn to an already taxed MWRA for their water. This would cost the residents of those cities hundreds of millions of dollars. If you Google "drowning by invasive weeds," you will see a page full of newspaper articles of men, women, and children that were caught up in the weeds and died by drowning, one of which was an accomplished swimmer that died in Woods Pond in Middleborough. It is only a matter of time before someone's child dies in Long Pond.
You know, back in the day, we could swim out to this buoy here with no problem, with no weeds, and now we can't go any further than probably to the edge of our dock now when we start encountering weeds. And now you get involved in some entanglement issues. I can tell you a few years back, I did jump off the back of my boat, not knowing how thick the weeds were, and almost didn't come up. And that's, that's no joke, scary.
The impact of these invasive weeds in a dollar amount is in the millions, and the ecological impact is the demise and extinction of many species of wildlife. I have had at-length conversations and meetings with Free Town and Lakeville administration, planning and select boards, conservation commissions, the Department of Environmental Protection, the Department of Fisheries and Wildlife, the Massachusetts Department of Lake Access, the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation, the Commissioner of the New Bedford Department of Public Infrastructure, the Taunton Waterworks, our state representatives, and Senator Roderick's. I have attended almost every meeting there was with regard to these issues. This problem has been presented to the municipalities and the state legislature since 1998. There have been many meetings and powerful suggestions as to how to resurrect, protect, and preserve these wonderful bodies of water. However, in 20 years, there's been zero progress. The reason is always the same, no money. The only way to create the revenue needed is to create a lake district. A lake district is a specialized unit of government designed to manage the watershed area. A major difference between a lake district and a lake association is a lake district's ability to collect fees directly from the town's property tax bills from the properties within the district. A lake district has a unique blend of powers tailored to fit the needs of the lake community. A lake district's day-to-day operations are carried out by a Board of Commissioners composed of elected employees, volunteers, and local officials. The financial direction of the district is determined by majority vote by the district proprietors at an annual meeting. Once the Lakeville Lake District is formed, the district committee will identify all properties within the district that have a benefit to the waterways to determine the annual fee that will be assessed. There are approximately 1,600 properties that have a benefit to Long Pond. Once there is a revenue stream, the district prudential committee will complete a detailed lake assessment that will determine the proper courses of action. Five major action points are, number one, create a plan to eradicate the invasive species. Number two, create a plan through engineering to redirect water runoff from dirt roads into proper catch basins and retention areas to limit or remove the silt and fertilizer infiltration. Number three, educate the public through the district's mandatory annual meetings on the things they can and must do to protect this resource. Number four, address the management of the state boat ramp at a mandatory boat wash plant to assure proper flushing prior to entry into the lake to prevent the introduction of invasive species. Number five, Long Pond is well-known for its shallow rocky waters. These rocks claim hundreds of boat propellers, caused thousands in property damage, and have caused many personal injuries, and some of those injuries were severe. With the revenue, the district would have the ability to remove those rocks that have plagued Long Pond forever. We ask the board to make an immediate decision to support Free Town/Lakeville Lake District, and to put this issue before the townspeople for a vote. This way, we can stop the 20 years of talking and start acting now. That's it.
Did you have a presentation to make along with that, or is that?
That was the presentation. I think what I should tell you is that we've had a committee formed, just about one person from every neighborhood on Long Pond. We've been meeting for about a year. We have, I did a presentation to Sockman in Lakeville. Unfortunately, when I did the presentation to Lakeville, I did not have this video. It was just me there. We hadn't started a petition yet, so the board was a little, well, they had questioned, am I, you know, am I the only one that wants this? So they thought maybe it's a little bit of taxation without representation. So that's when we decided to really buckle down, and we hired an attorney. We have a GoFundMe account, we've raised $7,000 so far. We know that now with either 100 signatures or 200 signatures, with 100 signatures, we can get on the special town meeting. With 200 signatures, we can require our own special town meeting. We'd rather the towns understand that this is an issue that's not going to go away. It's going to get to a point where people's property values are going to, basically, my house will be worth zero, and you won't be able to tax me for my property value that I'm being taxed now. So the towns are looking at losing millions of dollars in real estate taxes, as long, as well as the ecological impact is killing a tremendous amount of wildlife. So what we're asking is, I guess what I would ask you is, do you have any questions on how the district is formed and what's involved?
Yes. How would you go about forming the district? What would need the district?
The district, I'll call the district members proprietors. The proprietors are anyone who owns waterfrontage and owns a property that has deeded access to Long Pond. There's approximately 1,600 proprietors. And to form a district, we have to be, the district has to be voted in by a town meeting. In this case, it has to be done in Lakeville and in Free Town. We're hoping that we'd be able to do a combined town meeting, but I'm hearing that that's just a blank manner, and that probably won't happen. Once the towns vote in the district, then the district has to go, the legislation goes to the Senate. The Senate has to approve it, and once the Senate approves it, it gets a final sign-off by the governor. I have a letter of recommendation from Senator Roderick's in full support of the Lake District. He's well aware, and he's had, his members of his staff have attended our meetings, and they're well aware of what's going on. He's assured me that once the towns okay the district, vote in the district, then he said it's a cakewalk through the Senate. We're following, the legislation we're using, we're basically following suit with what a number of other towns in Massachusetts have done. We're not trying to reinvent the wheel. We're just basically cutting and pasting the word "Free Town" and "Long Pond" right into the existing legislation. We understand that there'll be a small burden on the town at the very beginning because we would have to sit with the assessor's office, identify each property, and create, through the software that Free Town has, a separate, either a line item on the existing tax bill or a separate tax bill. The town would collect the tax from the homeowners, and the funds would go directly to the district. The district is a prudential committee, and is subject to the state's oversight committee. They have to, you know, they have to run it just like any other prudential committee. The committee, once the, once the Senate and the governor okay the district, then there's our first meeting of the proprietors, where they vote in rules and regulations and financial state. Once we have identified the properties, then we'll know exactly how much of an income there will be. One of the other issues that we're interested in, did that answer your question?
Yes.
One of the other topics is the boat ramp. We know that Free Town, we know the state owns the boat ramp, and that the state deeded the management to the town of Free Town. I actually have a copy of the deed. I don't know if anybody's familiar with how, exactly how that works, but the town of Free Town is responsible for the management of the boat ramp. We currently have a person attending the boat ramp on a Saturday and Sunday. One of the biggest, I don't know what I'm looking for. I'm sorry. Braveheart. One of the biggest things that spreads the weeds is the fishing tournaments that are happening. There's no regulation on the fishing tournaments. There could be up to 50 boats that show up, and if you saw in the video, there's, they troll right through the weeds. I actually have a video that said, you know, the best part about Long Pond is the number of weeds there are, because that's where all the fish are. So they troll through these, through the weeds. Every inch piece that's cut off by a propeller breeds a new plant. Years ago, people would say, you know, that's only going to happen in the coves, it's really not that big of a deal. The video shows, you know, a two-acre patch right in the middle of the lake. That two-acre patch was not there last year. There's people here that live on Long Pond, and they'll verify that. Patches that are, that are growing now are doubling in size every year. I have other pictures, I don't know why they didn't make the video, of lakes that are three times the size of Long Pond in New Hampshire and Maine, that have been completely covered over. Let's see, it actually looks like you can walk across the lake. So, I know I'm bouncing a little bit, but. So our goal is, once the district is formed, to take over the management or have the town of Free Town deed the management to the district. At that point, we would, with an income source, be able to put in a wash plant, which happens at every major boat ramp in New Hampshire, Maine, Vermont. You can't get your boat in the water unless you prove that you have washed out your builds and cleaned the water, because that's where the invasive species is introduced into the lake. We would also require hours of operation at the boat ramp, which there is not currently. Three Sundays ago, I went to the boat ramp where the Free Town employee, the parking lot was full, there was 40 spots. The Free Town employee was telling, there was a line of 15 vehicles waiting to drop their boats in the water, but there are no more parking spots. The Free Town employee is telling the people to just go down the street, drop your boat in the water, and just park down the street somewhere. So I went down the street. There's another 30 trailers parked along the road on personal property, and then there's a median, and I don't know who owns the median, but there's 15 trailers parked there. As far as I know, the 40 spots were designed according to the size of the body of water. I have, right on the board at the boat ramp, there's a number six says, and it's an MGL, Mass General Law, says, when the parking lot is full, the attendee will close the parking lot until a new parking spot becomes available. Right now, we're, so that's not what they're doing. They're letting as many people that want to come in as they want. They're not charging people for parking down the street because they're not parking in the parking lot. So there's an extra 30 boats per day being introduced into the lake. Those 30 boats are houtar towners, they don't understand that we have an invasive weed species problem, so they just drive right through the weeds, and that creates, literally every time a boat goes through that patch, it's creating 1,000 plants. And that's why it's being spread so rapidly. So we need to, we need to create regulations so that that stops. So what we're asking is, we're asking the board to put us on the warrant at our next special town meeting.
I have another question. What, if anything, have you done with the city of Taunton or New Bedford?
So I met with both the city of Taunton and New Bedford. With New Bedford, that was with Zebiruta, and that was, he was the previous commissioner. So there's a new commissioner now, but I had a three-hour-long meeting with them, and at the end of the meeting, they said, what are you looking for? And I said, we're looking for money, because it's the only way we can treat the weeds and the other invasive species. And they said, well, we have no money for you. So that's basically that. The city of New Bedford spent $16,000 in 2006 on an invasive weed study. They showed it to me, we went over it, and from 2006 to two years ago, you know, I showed them that, the maps that they had showing where the invasive species were, I told them it is now currently five times worse than what they had depicted there in their maps. At the end of the video, it says that I've met with every regulatory board there has, there is, and no one offers any help. There is federal funding available. We have to be a registered 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization to get in the federal funding. It costs now a few thousand dollars just to become a 501(c)(3). That doesn't guarantee us the amount necessary to treat. There's a company called, oh boy, help me out someone. Well, there's a company in Massachusetts, it's the only company in Massachusetts that is certified to treat invasive species. They've been treating in Long Pond for 10 years now, in Parkhurst Canal, which is in Lakeville. They obtained a $5,000 permit, and it costs that neighborhood roughly $10,000 a year to treat the weeds. They split that $10,000 up by 30 houses in that neighborhood. Once there's a lake district in place, and we're collecting revenue from taxes, we would hire that company, and it would cost approximately $160,000 for the first treatment. They would treat for two years, and they've already done a preliminary assessment on the lake, and they said that the first two years would be approximately $160,000 each year, and then probably nothing in year three, four, and then five would be spot treatments, and probably between $20,000 to $30,000 for spot treatments. At that time, we'd still have the income coming in, and we would then move our interest into stopping the silt infiltration. Right now, Free Town sends road crew down to Lucy Ave, which is a dirt road. It's a private road, it's not even a public road, and for some reason, they think it's necessary to fill in all the ruts, which was depicted on the video. The rainwater washes the dirt and silt into the lake, and the town comes down and fills it back in. And then the rain comes and it washes it into the lake, and so on. I talked to the highway department, and they said, well, we've just always done it. And if you talk to any conservation, they'll tell you that that's the worst thing you can do for a body of water, is to allow the silt infiltration. So we'd need to address, put in catch basins, paved roads where they need to be paved. This is a four-mile long body of water, and I was wondering if, I know, I know some of you are familiar with it, but have you ever been on Long Pond, spent a day out there? You know, it's, it's a huge natural resource, and it's dying, and we're just trying to stop that from happening.
Yes.
Several years ago, when there was issues with the flow of Long Pond, not levels of Long Pond, I was highly involved with that. So we met quarterly, at, in the beginning, we met quarterly, then we met monthly over at DEP. There was a group of people around the table, maybe about 20 of us. Have you met with any of them? Because they all share the same concerns, I'm sure.
Yes, they've been, so I've been having meetings at, at the Lakeville Easies upstairs. The last meeting we had, we had 50 residents present, and the majority of them from Free Town because during the floods, and at the time, the lake level was high and people were nervous. I can tell you, I've lived on the water for 20 years, as most of these people, even longer, some of them their whole lives. I can tell you that when the ground is saturated, and it rains 12 inches in eight hours, no matter what level the lake is at, people's houses are going to flood.
No, that's not where, that's not where I was going with this, but I'll let you finish if you want. Go ahead.
Okay, so the invasive species is contributing to that, because the Snake River and the Namaskit River is being choked by these invasive species. So it is slowing the flow. It will certainly help to get rid of the weed species to alleviate some of that, some of that problem. There's also, right now, a Namaskit River Herring Fisheries Commission, and their goal is to rid the Namaskit River of the invasive weeds, the same invasive weed species that we're working. I've been going to their meetings as well. They are, they are a 501(c)(3), and they've already, they've just got their first round of federal funding.
No, so you said you're meeting with residents, and that's all great, I appreciate that. But my question was specifically, have you met with that pond complex made up of people that were designated by each of the towns and cities to attend with the hierarchy and DEP over at DEP? They meet quarterly, have you met with them?
No.
Okay. So my, my question to you-
I've been to DEP, yes. I have been to DEP.
Yep, but this is, this is a commission or a committee that was formed to watch over the whole pond complex, not only for the issues of the rising and fall of the levels of the pond, but also all the herring runs and everything else. It's made up of Middleborough, Taunton, New Bedford, Lakeville, Free Town, and-
I was at their last meeting.
Okay, so it's a big, it's a rather large committee. They have a lot of knowledge, and so that, that would be my first question to you, is have you met with any of them-
Yes.
-sat down, your group with them at DEP?
Yes, I have.
Because at first you said no, so I'm confused.
No, I'm sorry. I thought you were referring to differently.
Nope.
Okay, so the result of meeting with those people is the same result that I've had with every other group, is that there is no money. So they're all meeting, and they come up with great suggestions, but there's no money. So there's no state committee, there's no, no one. And I've met with everybody you could possibly meet. There is no money. Unless you are a registered 501(c)(3), even the federal funding that is available isn't going to be enough to do a one-year deal.
Okay, so my second question is, you talk about money, and you talk about this not being a second tax. Exactly what are, what-
It would be a-
Okay, so exactly what are you, and how much money are you looking for from each of the residents that live along the pond?
Okay, so, so far, our, what we're coming up with is 0.00035% of the assessed value of each proprietor. So if you have a million-dollar property, and it's assessed for a million dollars, then you'd be paying approximately $350 per year. You have a $100,000 assessment, then you'd be paying $35 per year. That will approximately bring in 160,000. That will approximately bring in a hundred and sixty thousand dollars of income into the district. The number could go up, could go down, we're still working on, you know, the, the actual amount, because, you know, I have a full-time job, and I have over a thousand hours into this, and I'm not getting paid for this, um, so, you know, we're, we're working really hard right now at, um, at getting more donations, so that we can actually hire someone to sit down and figure out exactly who would be proprietors, and the exact numbers. I come up with sixteen hundred because I sat at, on an assessor's map, and literally counted every house in every neighborhood. There may be some of those houses that don't have deeded access, and we have an attorney working on that as well.
Okay, and, um, so, this would be something that would be mandated for everybody that lived on the pond?
Yes, but there is an opt-out, for everybody that owns waterfrontage is mandated, is mandated, but there's an opt-out feature for anybody that has deeded access.
Okay, um, that's it right now. Uh, actually, one more question. When you build your committee, or whomever is going to sit on the committee to decide how and when the money is going to be spent, how do you see that working?
Uh, it's, it's actually, um, it's actually outlined in the legislation exactly how that works. So, once the district is approved by the state, then the proprietors have to meet and elect a committee. And once the committee is elected, then the committee sits down and, and figures out the financial direction, come up with a financial, um, statement and rules and regulations, and then those have to be voted on by the proprietors again.
Okay, so, let's take the regional school committee as an example.
Yes.
It's, um, it's a joint committee representing both Freetown and Lakeville, as you know.
Yes.
But we have equal representation on both sides.
Yes.
So, how do you see your committee working?
Well, there are tremendous, uh, there's two-thirds, actually, greater than two-thirds of the residents are Lakeville residents, um, and the rest are Freetown. I, I think that it would just come down to a proprietor's vote, and let, let the people vote in who they want to, to run the district.
Okay, thank you.
So, on a district, it would basically be its own entity?
It is, it's a state entity.
As, as, say, like a fire district, or water...
Yes, so, it's not really going to be more of a regional district, it's not, because it's, it's just, it's only, exactly what you're saying.
So, so, someone in Freetown and someone in Lakeville have the same vote?
Yes.
It's not something that's going to be one way or the other?
Yes.
It's the, the area as a, as a whole?
That's correct.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I'll go back to that.
Okay. Water supply issues, this Quiddicus, New Bedford has the water supply rights, but Quiddicus, do they have any concerns with you and the state water?
I have, I have, I have done a tremendous amount of research, and I can't find documentation showing that, um, New Bedford or Taunton has rights to, I've heard people say that, but I've never been able to find it in any registry.
To Quiddicus, up to Long Pond?
To Long Pond.
Okay.
So, I, I have our attorney looking into that as well, um, so, I don't have the answer to that.
Okay, because they're going to be concerned with any contributaries that may or may not be either subsurface or on surface?
The, Parkhurst is already treating, and the, uh, New Bedford and Taunton require them to test the waters outside of Parkhurst, um, I believe, by this way.
Um, boat ramp, was put in by the state?
Could I just, uh, interject, uh, they want us to treat, uh, and what, the reason I say that is because our water flows into their water.
Right.
So, they have the same problem.
I'm not speaking specifically to the weeds. I'm talking more, more the lake district?
Yep.
Because even once the weeds are abated, the lake district's still going to be there.
Yes.
The lake district's still going to have interest in the lake?
Yep.
Other than what may be interest with New Bedford in their water supply. So, yes, you're, we're talking about, right now, the immediate purpose for this, the immediate causation of this, is the weed issue. But if, in your estimation, within five years, that, that has subsided, this lakes district's still going to be here, you're still going to be generating revenues, you're still going to be looking to spend money on different things, different improvements, that may or may not impact the water supply to Quiddicus, they're going to want to have a say in, in anything that's, that's going into them. I don't know if you've spoken to them about it, or if you have a sign off from them, or...
Our, our, again, our main goal is water quality, so, the weed issue is, is impacting the water quality. So, we're one hundred percent about water quality. The better the water is in Long Pond, the better their drinking supply is. So, they're one hundred percent in favor of what we're doing. Plus, it won't impact them financially.
Boat ramp was put in by the state, as you said.
Yes.
Um, currently, it's maintained by the town. Restrictions on the state boat ramp, can you put restrictions on who can use the state boat ramp and when?
No, we wouldn't put restrictions on who can use it, it's, it's a public boat ramp. You can put a gate in front of it, and you can put a time limit on, on it. I was trapped behind a gate myself, um, where the signs said it was a state boat ramp, and the sign said, "If you're not out by seven P.M., you have to call the police department for them to come let you out," and it's a fifty-dollar bond. You can increase, uh, the town of Webster increased, had the same issues that we, that we have, um, Webster Lake, it's just about the same size as Long Pond. They increased their, their boat fees for non-residents from five dollars to forty-five dollars, so what that did was they cut down traffic in the lake, but they increased their revenue to help out with their water quality. And they, they, and we're, we're doing exactly what them, them and other lakes have done.
And their boat ramp was state-installed also?
They have two boat ramps, one is, is state boat ramp, and one is a town boat ramp.
Uh, and the boat ramp fees currently being generated, that would go to the lake district, or would that state go onto the town?
That would go to the lake district, um, because the lake district would also pay the attendee, so the town of Freetown would not have any responsibility in line, other than policing, um, for the boat ramp.
You mentioned, you mentioned if people directly on the pond are obligated to pay, the people that aren't directly on the pond that have deeded access would be allowed, would be asked to pay, but they could opt out?
They can. The opt-out feature includes them signing a, um, a deed restriction. So, a deed restriction would be put on, recorded at the register of deeds, saying that they are getting up their deed rights to Long Pond.
How would you enforce that? How would you enforce it if somebody that's lakefront decides not to pay?
It's, it's a tax bill.
Should I be generating the same tax bill that we normally pay, and we'd be able to do that?
It's, uh...
We're not the obsessed here.
Um, well, I've already sat, yeah, so, um...
How would that work, Karen?
It generates a separate tax bill that, that is not part, it's based on the value of their, their property, but it's not, it's not part of our tax bill. Therefore, enforcement, I'm not sure exactly who's going to do it. If they don't pay, um, I know Mr. Sasha has said before that they would put a lien on your property with the sixteen percent interest. I'm not sure that we're involved in that. There are towns out there that merely provide the list with the assessed values, and tell you who is the property owner, what the assessed value is, they go with it themselves.
And we're open to that as well. We're, we're unfortunately learning as we go, um, and I've, and I've found that, you know, I had the town of Beckett assessor call Freetown to just, uh, explain to them how, how they go about it, and I've talked with several different town assessors, and I've found that just the way every town collects in a different way. So, we just have to figure out what works best for the town. We understand that it will be a small burden on the town to start, um, and from what I've found is that the districts pay the town for the time that they've put into it. Unfortunately, they have to pay back the town, because you'll have, you'll have to put time into it upfront, and then, once the district is funded, has a revenue, then they pay the town back for the time that they put into it.
Currently, how many people out of sixteen hundred do you say would be affected, do you speak for?
I have, uh, signatures of, uh, I have over a hundred signatures, I'm sorry, I've eighty-two signatures since last weekend from Freetown residents, and we have well over, we probably have a hundred and eighty signatures in Lakeville, um, and that's just since last weekend.
Around a hundred and fifty week people.
Yeah, and we have a petition, and that's, that's just from the people that we're doorknocking. That doesn't include all the people that have come to all the meetings that we've had. And when people come into those meetings, I have a sign-in sheet and ask people if they're familiar with what a district is. Everybody checks no, and then at the end of the meeting, I have people raise their hand and, and say whether they're in favor of or not, and absolutely everybody's been in favor. I've doorknocked hundreds of houses already, went through Clock Shores for four weekends, and talked with all the residents of Clock Shores, which I thought was going to be the biggest problem, because of a lower-income area, and I found that they're in the most support, because if you go by Big Beach and, on Clock Shores on a hot summer day, there's a hundred and fifty people swimming in Long Pond. They all are experiencing these weeds, they're twenty feet off of their beach. Which leads me to another thing, if I may, Freetown has a, a public beach. These weeds are twenty feet off of Freetown's public beach. If I were you, I'd shut it down, because someone is going to drown. I guarantee you that within the next year or two, someone's going to drown. It's not a highly-used beach, there's a couple people there, you know, on a hot summer day, but these weeds kill people. You go swimming through them, you get nervous, and you wrap up. The gentleman on, on, on the interview there is Cliff Carden, he's a Freetown firefighter. He's a big guy, and the weed's the most killer. So, you know, in my opinion, I think we should shut down Freetown Beach until this problem is solved.
Currently, all, all residents have access to the pond, do they still have access to the pond?
Yes.
Just by the boat ramp, or is there any other accessible?
The Freetown Beach is the only other, uh, public access that I know of.
So, as far as residents of the town of Freetown that don't live in proximity pond, it really won't affect, affect them except for, well, you said you would have to use some town funds, that would be reimbursed?
Yes.
The taxes, that, who sets the taxes, the tax rate? That point oh three five, I know how you came up with the number, you need, you saw how much you needed grades, you divided by a number of sixteen hundred houses, and you came up with your number, I, I figured that model, but who's going to set that rate?
The district would be responsible for that.
The district would set the rate? What else would money be useful?
And again, that would have to be voted on by the proprietors.
What else would money be useful besides just the, uh, the weed?
Um, so, the, um, a wash plant at the boat ramp, a gate at the boat ramp, um, an attendee at the boat ramp. The wash plant costs approximately sixty thousand dollars to install. It would be used for proper catch basins, there, you know, a lot of paved roads that just dump water right from the catch basin into the lake, and there are lake catch basins that are designed to, um, uh, take out sediment and oils before the water gets, goes into the lake. Those catch basins are very expensive, um, so, I'm talking about, you know, the next ten to fifteen years. This isn't going to get resolved overnight, but the, so, weed is number one. Number two is, is the management of the boat ramp, because that's the, the number-one contributor to the invasive species. And then, uh, like the video said, there, there are a lot of rocks that are that far underneath the water, and every day, someone hits these rocks, because there's a lot of outer towners that don't know where they are. Even, even some of us who live on Long Pond have hit rocks. With the income, we'd be able to have a barge with, uh, an excavator with fingers, and be able to maneuver those rocks to the water's edge, or take them out of the lake completely. There's been, people have been killed hitting those rocks, because they're just below the water surface, and you just don't see it. The state won't mark the rocks, um, because of liability. So, I've had that conversation with plenty of attorneys and, and, and state-level officials, and, uh, it's crazy to me, but that's their reason, they don't want to get sued, because a properly-marked rock opens liability. So, water quality, anything that has to do with water quality is what the district would spend money on.
Last question, have you had an environmental study done yet?
The Solitude Lake Management. The Solitude Lake Management is a company in Massachusetts, um, they've told me that the, um, environmental, they do the environmental, environmental study, um, and assessment, and that's a fifteen thousand dollars just for that to be done.
Until you get that done, though, you really don't know the scope, you know the scope that you, I see it, but you don't know the scope of what they're going to recommend, and then they'll have to go, once the study's done, you can...
We've given them detailed maps as far as, uh, you know, what's being covered right now, and they've given us a fairly accurate estimate. And that's, that's all they do. They are, um, they're all income management, they, uh, control invasive species.
Is there an EPA, does EPA, or does the state have anything that studies this?
Uh, this, the federal government has an invasive weed, uh, an invasive spe, you know, aquatic invasive species task force. It was put together in two thousand and six. I have, I have the, the documents, that thing. Try contacting anybody there, they're, they're almost, it's, it's impossible to talk to. I've spent hours at the, at the Department of Environmental Protection in Lakeville, talked with so many people, and they just all come back to me and say, "You know what? We're not, we don't deal with water quality. We're in environmental, why don't you deal with..." But they don't. It's not, not their issue.
Any other questions?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm good right now, thanks.
Okay, are there any other questions?
I'd like to hear, um, from Kim.
Oh, well, my only comment was, um, you know, the town would be obligated to provide the assessed values, um, for them to then do whatever type of assessment that they wanted to do. Um, you know, I would be cautioned, I want to caution you guys, if you decided that you were going to include that as part of the tax bill, um, you know, the tax rate and billing can be held up if there are any issues with, um, the district, um, you know, getting their rate and that sort of thing. So, um, you know, you, you would want to, um, just be careful before you make the decision that it would be included. And then, there's going to be, um, some other issues for you folks to handle. I mean, if you're having an employee, you're going to, you know, obviously need to handle the payroll, um, you're going to set an annual budget, you're going to have appropriations, you need a warrant process to pay those bills. Uh, it's basically like just a little town, um, in a general fund, so, you would be responsible for all of those types of things as well, which, I just don't want it to be oversimplified, because it, it would take some, some effort and efforts to do, yeah.
I'm not against the idea, I, we've met in the past, a couple of years ago, we've met, we talked about this, and I, I think there needs to be something done there. What I am a little concerned is, you, you came in front of us today, which I appreciate, you made an excellent presentation on the screen, which I appreciate, answered a lot of questions, which I again appreciate. You didn't bring us any kind of sample of what you're looking for from us, as far as a warrant article, what kind of language you're looking for, what you're looking for, that kind of stuff. You're here asking us to put you on the next warrant, which we're going to do real soon here.
So, this was put together by our attorney, and if I may, we're the undersigned registered voters of the town of Freetown, due hereby petition, the board is selecting to add to the warrant of the next special town meeting, or call a special town meeting, and to include in the warrant for said meeting the following article. To see if the town will put forth legislation to establish the Freetown, Lakeville, Lake District, and the towns of Lakeville and Freetown. The district's purpose is to use sustainable and appropriate environmental practices to encourage biodiversity in the plant and animal communities that use the lake in the district while controlling nuisance or damaging species in Long Pond. Take appropriate action to protect and maintain the integrity of the water of the pond as to protect public and private water supplies, or to take action relative thereto. We understand that carrying out the purpose of this district, an assessment fee shall be collected by the town resident... We understand that carrying out the purpose of this district, an assessment fee shall be collected by the town residents of, I'm sorry. We understand that in carrying out the purpose of this district, an assessment fee shall be collected from town residents abutting and/or having deeded access to Long Pond on an annual basis. Without the Lake District, Long Pond and associate facilities will experience problems in declining resource use and deficiencies of environmental control that threaten the ecological, economical, public safety and health and recreational values of these bodies of water within the district, and subsequently the outswamps and the Masque River watershed area.
Okay, does it specifically reference chapter, second? You said there's a specific chapter and section, is that a cast or something that?
It does not specifically reference that.
And there's a guidelines by them of how it will look?
Yes, the legislation is set forth, and it's been the exact same legislation in every district in Massachusetts. If you'd like, I can provide all of you with copies of existing Lake Districts.
Absolutely. And copy that too would be great, so we can see what it says.
They're probably somewhere in Massachusetts general laws, a general law that sets up such districts.
There is exactly.
I have that legislation. If you could give us, I'd like to read the laws. So if you could just give us the chapters and sections that we can look for, it's going to be helpful.
There'll be an enabling statute that would allow
Yes.
the town to adopt it and to have it submitted to the board of selectmen.
David, to your, to your experience, do you know if there's a, is every district enabling legislation, or is there a?
I'm not that familiar with that. I know if there's using a statutory citation, that there has to be some mechanism in the general laws that, that will be incorporated into the articles the state's in accordance with, or adopts the principles of whatever Nass General Law section, whatever, in dense terms of the setting up of the district.
I do have that with me, but we don't be here until one o'clock in the morning.
Normally, that would reference that, what, what you're trying to say. That's what I was trying to say, too. Normally, that would reference the chapter and section, so we put that into effect.
It would be something like to see if the town would adopt.
Can we get a copy of that? No, can we also get a copy of that, so we can sense that legal council, they can make adjustments as they see to it? Can you also look into, with the board's approval, can you also look into Webster Lake District and see what they went through, how they went through?
Silver Lake would be a better, Webster Lake is actually committed, they're not an actual district like we're looking to do. Webster Lake is all, you know, when our house is on the water, so they are all donations, that's all.
All right, so what's with the other, Silver Lake?
Sherwood, yeah, thank you.
Sherwood?
Sherwood, they took.
Sherwood, hey.
Thank you.
Does the vote want to take any action at this point?
No, I don't think so.
I think so. The other thing I'd like to do, though, if we do do a town meeting for this, they probably want to be on its own, because this is going to take up.
Yes, I also like to reach out to the Esalen Pond Complex through DEP and making sure that, because they are a governing party of that whole complex, that we're not overstepping our bounds with this.
If you can get the stuff we asked you for, that'd be great, and proceed from you.
Okay. Do we know if we're actually having a, a special town meeting? Are you feeling that we will be included on that warrant? Or are we better off obtaining the signatures and having our own special town meeting?
You're better off working with us and come up with a mutual warrant to go on the special town meeting. That specific special town meeting, I don't, I don't think you have time to go on that one, do you? Because that, we have to post that, we have to, all town meetings, we have to post it, we have to be on the street by a certain time. All the articles have to be in by a certain time, we have to have an article written, reviewed by council, placed on, recommendations. You'd be tight to get on that meeting. You might want to have a standalone meeting that we would set up, a standalone meeting, because you're going to probably have a good turnout. Both people that are directly involved, you know, residents that live directly on the pond in the neighborhood, and people that want to understand what's going on. And you're going to have to make a presentation similar to what you did here, maybe a little more in-depth, you'll have to answer questions. And, lack of a better word, defend your, your position.
Do you have our attorney present for that?
Yeah. To me, that would be the, the way to, the way to go on it. Not try to lump it into a meeting that's the area scheduled, like all the stuff on there, to make it inflated and other stuff.
Do we know what a forum is needed for, you have an idea of what?
Yeah, what's the twenty, twenty people? Pretty low pressure.
Okay.
Special town meeting, what's a forum for a special town meeting?
Ten.
Ten? Pretty low pressure.
Oh, wait a minute, for a special, it's on a hundred?
A hundred?
No, fifty, fifty.
Hundred for a petition, hundred petition, petition.
Petition, special town meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Either.
It was ten for, for annual.
You get sixteen hundred residents, you'll probably get more than fifty or a hundred, whichever.
The issue for Freetown, though, is that there's really, I believe, only about three hundred altogether. So Lakeville is actually burdened significantly more than the town of Freetown. Because it's only one third, less than a third of the lake is in Freetown. So totally, there may be, there may be three hundred people involved in Freetown.
Freetown says no, Lakeville says yes.
It's done.
Vice versa.
Yeah.
Or vice versa.
Yeah, that's why we're hoping to get a conjunction, a combined meeting. Actually, no one's going to say no. We have, I have not talked to one person yet that has been against it, whether they own a hundred thousand dollar house or not.
Unfortunately, it shouldn't be up to other people, but it is, it's a total town, the entire town's applied to the town meeting. So you may have people that don't live on the town that voice interest or concerns.
They may, they're not being taxed, so.
I understand. It's a lot of hope, right? Okay, I thank you for your presentation, you did an excellent job.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Zendis, I believe you are here for Nick Drive, Cody Drive, Ethan Circle, and Riley Circle.
Yeah, we've been through the planning board process, everything's been accepted, Ethan is accepted. We have a letter in front of you from the highway department saying that he's accepted everything. You could have the updated plan.
Do you those do I get? Just way downtown halls, you can see them, those people. Sign something. Hmm?
They have been on display.
They've been on, they have been on display? Okay. Okay, let me read this. In the record for the public hearing. In accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-one and eighty-two, you are hereby being notified of a public meeting to review the layout of a public weeds within the town of Freetown. The town of Freetown Board of Selectmen will be placing on their agenda the layout for Nick Drive, Cody Drive, Ethan Circle, and Riley Circle as a public way on Monday, August twentieth, two thousand and eighteen, at six P M. Council on Agent at two twenty-seven Chase Road, East Freetown, Mass. The meeting will be held to see if the Board of Selectmen will vote to lay out as a public way a road entitled Nick Drive in its entirety with utility and all other amendment easements. Cody Drive in its interning, entirety, let's try that, with utility and all other easements. Riley Circle in its eternity, entirety.
He doesn't like that word.
No, I don't like that word. With utility and all other easements. Ethan Circle with, in its entirety
Yay.
with utility and all other easements, or take any action relative thereto. The Board of Selectmen votes in the affirmative to lay out the public way. An article will be placed on the town meeting warrant to see if the town will vote to accept the roadway as a public way. These plans are available for public viewing at the office of the town clerk, three North Main Street, Assunat, Mass. Or take any action relative thereto. All persons, parties, or corporations interested therein may appear and be heard relative thereto. Our Freetown Board of Selectmen. Anybody have any questions, both the internities? Mr. Selectman? No? Anybody in the, go ahead, man.
I'm Samantha Downs, resident of thirteen Nick Drive.
Nick Drive, thank you.
I just have some questions. I've spoken to a bunch of my neighbors, Noah, any more of them, about, we have a lot of safety concerns with this neighborhood, because it's a cut-through from Chase Road to Brayley Road. Chase Road between Cody Drive and Brayley Road is a thirty mile an hour zone, it's, you know, narrow. And I'm finding, we're all finding, that people like to come down our neck of the woods, because it's a straightaway, and they can just fly. We've been a resident in the neighborhood for five and a half years now. And when we first moved in, I had to call the police department, because my son and his friend, when they would get off the school bus, there was a pickup truck that would come flying from the top of Nick Drive from Brayley, around the bend, down the hill, and the kids had to jump out of the way numerous times. Every time, every day, four o'clock, when that guy would get out of work at HDP or one of the companies up there. So I called the police department and I asked, I wanted the digital sign put in, the speed limit sign, you know, so people would know, because nothing's posted. So the officer came down and told me that because the development isn't accepted yet, there's no way to enforce anything. So it was either, you know, nab somebody for reckless driving or driving to endanger. They were successful in pulling this gentleman over, stopping him, and he has not been through since. The concern that I have is that this is not going to stop. And I wrote a letter to the planning board last October, or October before, it's been a while, about possibly putting in speed bumps, or making the development private, you know, becoming an association, or anything that we can do to improve the safety in this development. When I moved in five and a half years ago, there was basically nobody there, so. Since then, that, the whole, say, the end of the development has just exploded. Every law is sold, I think we have two or three that aren't built upon yet. But there are so many little kids in this neighborhood now, and they're all starting to come out and play, and ride their bikes, and something bad is going to happen. And in a perfect world, if I had my way, Cody Drive would be closed off completely, and have it just be one way in and one way out, so that we don't have people flying through here, just because it's convenient for them, and they don't want to do thirty miles an hour through Chase Road, when they have a wide-open street. I know other residents have voiced concerns over whether the school bus will be able to go down there, which I know they've contacted the bus company, and, you know, so, and I don't have a child with interest in school buses, but I know that that was one issue. Mainly, you know, I'm concerned with safety issues, and then I also have maintenance issues, like what will, who's going to be responsible for the little strip of grass that got put in along the sidewalk edge? Like, for instance, those couple lots that haven't been built upon yet, the grass is like off the ground like this, because nobody mows up there. The new trees that have been planted are all starting to die already, because they don't get watered. So it's, you know, I'm trying, I am concerned for property values and maintaining the aesthetic of the neighborhood, which is what the covenants all dictate. You know, so everybody's all on the same page, and it's all nice and uniform, and, you know, it's a nice development. And that's basically, you know, I would say the safety is the biggest thing. I personally, just on my property itself, I have the large drainage easement in the back. So one of the questions would be, who's responsible for maintaining that? You know, it's all overgrown, like, it's a big field. And when we had first moved into the development, somebody used to come and mow it. It would be a big tractor that would come through and, you know, mow as much as they could, and, you know, it would be all cleaned up, and that was that. When I had spoke to the planning board last year, or whenever it was, they had come, somebody had came, come down after that and mowed it, cleaned it up and all that. And since the work's been going, ongoing to finish the subdivision, the spillways have all had the rocks and everything placed in there to, you know, bring them up to their standards. But I'm just curious, going forward, if now this is a town-accepted development, what happens to those easement areas? As we like to, because the property, our property has, you know, basic, our property, then the easement, we have more behind it that we can get to, and we like to mow out back there. So it's, you know, for maintenance of the pond and, you know, convenience of us, I guess, too, to be able to get to the opposite side of the property. But I'm just, just curious how that is handled. I haven't been able to see anywhere in the subdivision bylaws about the actual upkeep of these areas, so I don't know what.
No, there is no, the town doesn't keep upkeep, that, those are there to slow down water flow and prevent water backing up into people's properties, and
Right.
That's not something.
And they work fantastically.
Well, that's what they're designed to do. Jim, you want to speak to how?
Basically, you know, most.
Detention pond, retention pond.
Yeah, most subdivisions, the neighbors take care of what's on their property, along with the strip that's in front. The strip in front is a planning board requirement. We don't have a choice not to put the sidewalk up against the strip, and they always like to have a grass strip.
Right.
The same with the trees. The trees are the responsibility of the lot holder, once it's turned over to the town. It's up to them to take care of the trees, water the trees, cut the grass. And if you want your backyard mowed, it's going to be our responsibility.
So there is no general maintenance required of a drainage easement area?
No, the way that works is the town maintains its property. So there's a town, there's a layout, the, the road is on a layout. If you look on the plan, you'll see where the asphalt is and where the asphalt isn't. But the town still owns a piece that's the size of what's the asphalt is. Most people don't realize that, most people think it ends at the asphalt, it doesn't. There's a, so the town's responsible for maintaining what's in its layout.
Okay.
Outside of its layout is the property owner's responsibility. The catch basins would be in the layout, so those would be cleaned by the highway department. They would clean the catch basins, make sure they're not retained, matter of fact, there'll be a discussion on that. They remove all the sands from the winter and all that. From that point on, it's designed to flow at certain levels into that, that pond, and that pond just, it's not really a pond.
No, it's not a pond, because trust me, we skate on it if we can.
It's just, technically, it's resource area once used. It's, it's a detention pond, it's a low area
Yeah.
that, that slows the water flow down, and it holds and it settles into the ground, it doesn't go into people's basements, basically.
Right, yeah. Are there?
The main reason for the easement, though, is to make sure that a homeowner doesn't stop the flow
Right.
of the water coming from those basins and off the roadways.
So is there a, because like with the, I don't know what you call the big blocks that you guys dropped in there, but is there like a annual inspection of where the water drains?
The only time they would go there is if there was a maintenance problem, and if, if the highway surveyor saw the water backing up for some reason, he would have access to those areas with easement and take care of something, but only if there was a problem.
I'm sorry, so I guess basically my question is, being the, you know, a drainage area, just for its purpose, is it supposed to be mowed? Or is the intention that, no, because the vegetation that's in there is to help absorb the water that drains?
It also slows down, and it slows down the water flow and that, but to Jim's point, if it does block it, then he'll open it up and make it so drains again.
Okay, yeah, because I know, like, you know, like the sediment does flow down the drains and everything spills out, and, you know, it turns into a big sand pile at the bottom, and, you know, I go in there and I try to, you know, I pick out all the trash and everything that flows down there, but the.
With property headways and maintenance, you shouldn't see that.
Understand it, when it's public. I know you're probably getting services now, but you're not supposed to be getting services for school bus, trash pickup, road maintenance, from the town.
Right.
The, the property owner can do all those things. School buses, that stuff, plowing in the wintertime, the town's not supposed to be supplying that to private property.
Right.
Public property, we are required to do all those things.
Okay.
And we do those things.
Right.
So that's one of the differences between if you kept it private and you kept it public.
Right.
I don't know if you've spoken to the property owner. I don't know if you've spoken to the property owner about forming association and taking over and trying to buy the property yourself, or...
We just kind of were throwing ideas around, just trying to see what we could do in order to be able to have more of a say of what we can do with the streets, basically, because, you know, some people have suggested speed bumps, but we can't do speed bumps because of plowing. I believe the highway department said that they do have the removable speed bumps that could be taken out in the winter. How effective those would be, I don't know, but...
Well, you can do tabletops, there's other things, but that wouldn't have anything to do with the highway department. If you took it over, you, if it's a private body, that would be up to you to maintain, do, install and uninstall however...
So if, so say we didn't become a private development, would there be any way to request having this looked into? To have either speed tables or humps or anything? You can't do anything?
Well, the state staff would accept the speed limit.
Okay.
Inconferences in the road besides that.
What about putting up no-through traffic signs?
That would probably...
That would be my suggestion.
Through the highway department.
I don't know how you can do that, it's a public road.
That's, that's the biggest thing is, I mean, we're just trying to come up with any possible way to get people to stop.
Yeah, but they're thinking about signs, they don't really, I'm sorry.
No, I didn't even know you were behind me, really, sorry.
The signs are really not respected. We have several stop signs and we do have that issue, my husband and I see it. We are right there at the intersection and it is, we teach, we are on vacation, and we see all the little children that you see down the bikes, and we just like, oh my goodness, because they fly through, they don't not respect the stop signs.
That's one of the benefits of having it in a public property, because now the police have full enforcement of speed limit, stop signs, all that stuff. Where on private property, they really don't. They still can enforce, I believe, drunk driving statutes on private property, but...
It's a way, it's laid down by...
It's a way.
So I think it's more of like a safety issue, as you mentioned, we are very concerned about that.
Right, I mean, I spoke to Kevin a couple of times and, you know, discussed the, the issue with him and...
I don't see why the town couldn't ask the highway surveyor to put up a sign that says not a thruway. I mean, the enforceability of it...
That's the only thing that...
But if it, maybe it's just a deterrent, you know, to see, it's there, people see it, they don't drive through it.
I'd also like to suggest sending a letter to the company on Brayley Road as, to not use that as a thruway.
HTP?
HTP, yeah. We've, we've sent, you know, letters from the board to stop and chop along the same lines. I can't see why we can't do that, something like that as well.
Yeah, that would, I think that that would be a start, you know, no-through traffic if we can, slow children signs.
Right, I think that the way we ward it, like, there are a lot of children in that area, it is, it is a rural development, you know, we prefer you not use that. We strongly suggest that you use Chase and on Brayley Road.
Right, yeah, because I asked Kevin if there are any other subdivisions that, you know, can be considered cut-throughs. And he said the only one off the top of his mind at the time was Galgonquin Way. So I was looking at Connect, Bullock and Chipaway.
Right.
I don't know that...
The town plan does the same thing with Green Acres, I mean, there's a lot of roads there that people could through. You got Mill Street, Holland Road, Seven and Nine, so the whole subdivision would use that as a cut through.
I go that way all the time, I would never even...
No, it doesn't make sense.
It doesn't make sense at all.
It does not make sense to me.
If I may take this opportunity, my, my name is Noah Rosen, and my wife are, already spoke, we, we kind of ended up on opposite sides here.
You're on Nick, nineteen Nick?
Yes, nineteen Nick. I, I think the first thing that I'd like to say is to, to, to thank all of the presentees for what, what they've made. They've really made a place that we all love to, to call home. With that said, the cutting through does make one feel unsafe. My wife and I walked down Nick and I, I can remember one time when a pickup truck came speeding through. And we just said, whoa, slow down, buddy, and they stopped. And they looked back, and we kind of felt unsafe at that moment and we headed back home. There are people doing it with a vengeance, I'd say, you know, it's almost like an ownership, you know, like I'm going to cut through. And it's like, I, I don't like the vibe that it sends, you know, it, it does feel unsafe. I'm not trying to say that we should be exclusively in our own bubble or that we're better than anybody else. We're, we're hard-working taxpayers as many of us are here in town. But I do think it would, would be nice to take, take some action to just make it a safer place. I, I did really like that idea of, of speed humps, if that can be looked into, or some kind of sign with the no-through traffic. Whatever you, you could do to make, make our home a little bit more safe, we, we would appreciate it.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with what he said in terms of, you know, almost feeling as though people are doing it out of spite. It just seems you're in your front yard and I see people, I can hear them coming flying down Cody until I just stand and I wait.
Yep, yep.
And then they come from the top of the street, from your house, and they floor it. Some of them have very loud trucks around here and...
The busters with the holes.
And when you look at them, they rev the engines and go faster, and it's just...
They do it very late at night as well.
Oh, it's all hours, it's all hours, you know.
So on a side note, I teach high school Spanish. I don't teach math, but in mathematical terms, what they're essentially doing is taking the hypotenuse. You know how that's the shortest point between two, two points in a triangle? And in a way, that's what Nick really is, is that shortest point between Brayley and Chase. They, they shave off maybe ten seconds, but in the meantime...
You have to stop with a stop sign now, too.
Right.
Kind of the pizza.
I mean, I know people coming down Brayley that cut through Nick to Cody. It's, you know, they avoid the intersection at, at Chase and Brayley. Because you have people that come flying down Chase, but don't go to Chase. It's, it's just what people do, and it's, it is scary.
Do you have association right now? Is there a homeowners association there?
Once it's turned over, they are responsible to set it up, it's in the bylaws.
It is in the...
It's up to the homeowners to set it up.
Set up a home, home association.
So it's something that we can do?
It's in the bylaws.
What's that supposed to maintain, certain things, certain covenants in the D?
Yeah.
Like restrictions and that stuff? So we can still put it on?
Yeah.
And if you want us to remove it because you get together and do something, you could do that.
Yeah, I don't see that that really an option. You're going to have to take the new asphalt, you're going to have to take the, the buses will never go down there. You'll have to plow it for the homeowners.
Yeah, I mean, that's a, it was a total worst-case scenario if that was the only way.
What about blocking one emphasis?
Well, that was my other question.
It's a planning board requirement.
That would still be private way, so you would have to make it a private way. The only way it's going to get accepted is the way it is right now. The only thing we could do is put up, obviously, some things get alleviated, some things don't. So you can't block traffic, you can't do speed bumps, those things. You can't put up signage, it's enforceable now, where now it's not really enforceable.
Right.
You still, you would get all the services, you probably sort of are getting most of them now, but you would get all the services. So that's a, but it doesn't cost you any extra to do that if you were private, it would.
Right, yeah.
You would be responsible for all those things.
Yeah, we would be the burden for, for everything.
The sidewalk must have helped a lot, that you have a sidewalk now that the kids can comfortably ride up and down, too. Yeah, there's a lot of costs that we're in gearing and we have. We didn't want to put the top layer down in the sidewalk until the houses were more complete, because there's too many subdivisions that we've done the other way and they ruin the streets.
They're destroyed, right.
And it's not our responsibility, but the town's left with a mess because you have marks all over.
Basically, I became the voice for everybody in sending those emails about getting those sidewalks paved last year because everybody with an interest in having the school bus go down there was screaming about it and nobody wanted to do anything about it, so...
Again, we were just trying to make sure there was enough houses built so that the, the last few would be destroyed.
Right, yes, and I can see where, you know, some of the asphalt's getting damaged now from the construction that's going on now. And then I just say, ah, Jim was right. But basically, I think our safety is the number one concern, and I know you guys haven't mentioned it yet, but where they are right at the head of Cody Drive, I don't know if there's any giant blocks or boulders that could be placed in the front.
We worry about that a lot, you know?
Oh, I've seen, yeah.
I wasn't going to mention it, but then we sleep at night and we think, if a driver were under the influence coming down Cody...
Just lose control because of the speed that they are driving.
They could go right into our house, and we do worry about that, that's a real concern.
One of the benefits is all the boulders that we have throughout the development are kind of like a nice feature. Everybody's, you know, oh, can I have some of your boulders? Can I have some of your rocks? I mean, I have a huge one in my, in my yard that came out of my pool.
They can do anything they want on their property. You know, they can put up any kind of posts they want, they can put up a fence that they want, foot rocks that they want, and landscape around them. You know, it's their property. The markers are out there, they're five foot off the back of the curb and for the mow spot. So anywhere after that five foot, the homeowner can do anything they want. I don't think they want a nice, ugly ceiling area.
No, no, I don't, I don't think so.
You know, we, by putting a stop sign there and going through the planning boards, rules and regulations, we've done everything safety-wise that they require and that we felt was necessary. But not to say that the homeowner can't do anything.
As a side note, I'm sorry, in the restrictive covenants, I think I read that the fence must start after the front of the house, but in this case...
Yeah, we can't have any fences along the front.
That would be like a rail, this would be a rail, not a fence.
Oh, okay, all right.
We're talking about a six-foot solid fence that you can't see through, that is not allowed frontside.
I see, okay.
But you can do, you know, you can do rods, you can do decorative fence, you can do something that would stop a car.
Oh, I like to hear this, okay.
So does this mean that the restrictive covenants, are those still in effect even though the town...
There's nothing to oppose.
Those are the, on the...
Town's just doing the road rails all over.
Yeah, we're just doing the road.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'm going to make a motion to goof the layout the way and place on the warrant article for Cody Drive, Nick Drive, Ethan Circle and Riley Circle.
Motion made in second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. I'd also like to make a motion to send a letter to H E C, H T P.
H, heat transfer, H T.
I'll just say heat transfer, to, you know, to have them not use that way as a thruway in the other word.
Would it be possible to also send it to Total Welding and Rapid Steel? Because I know for a fact that, yep, that's right, seven every morning and four o'clock every afternoon, the same rookie soul comes through and...
Into them. Do I have a second for that motion, as amended? Motion made in second and to send a letter to heat transfer products, Total Welding, Rapid Steel, to remind them and their employees not to use Nick Drive and Cody and Ethan as a cut through.
Do a seat at Ethan's house.
All, in discussion on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, approve South Coast Bike Way Alliance pedal for the path for September sixteenth, two thousand eighteen. Is anybody here to speak about that?
Aye.
Please state your name and for the record and...
My name is Bob Escondola, and I am president of the South Coast Bike Way Alliance. So basically, we just, we're like a fundraiser with attempting to, to move for the first time in September sixteen. The total would be fifty-two mile ride, passing through, pound to two pound, and starting and returning to Brook, we need some impact and for equal, we have a couple stops, several stops that are going to be ice cream shops as part of the ride, ice cream shops.
Just tell me that, I hope that's what we can... I write for ice cream.
They, they are sponsors and they agreed to serve ice cream to the riders, you know, for, when they, when they shop. So this is similar to another ride, we're kind of copying from some friends that have held a ride in the spring. It was very successful the last several years, so we're looking to do this in the fall, following their model. And Hanes is one of the stops that, that the riders can make before continuing on the ride.
And you were part of three C?
Yes, sir.
And you raised money for whom?
We are raising money to support an effort to study a regional bike path that would connect all the way from Swansea to Wareham. And we work with Surfhead, actually, he's a Surfhead representative that attends our meetings and we work with them on mapping. What we're looking to do is to fund, to have match funding for a feasibility study that would help, you know, present the route that would be best served to make those connections take place. So we've, one of the things we've done is we've worked with local bikeway committees in New Bedford, Westport and Dartmouth to submit for CPC funding for this type of study. And we're looking to do something of our own to help support that effort as well. The cost of the study is, is maybe a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so we're trying to do our part. And as we, we've been successful in receiving grants for some of the work we've done in the past. There are Gansett Bay Women's, a big cycling organization, they've been very good with us and other organizations. But we're trying to step our, our own efforts to, to match in those grants. So that's, this, this is our first great foundation, right?
Did you give a copy to the chief, and chief, have you had time to review?
Fire chief and I have reviewed the plan and, and we have no objections. I would note, though, that, you know, the town has no authority with respect to permitting on state highway and, and travel a portion of Route eighteen. I would also suggest if the board is amenable to authorizing this, that the organization on the date of the event, call the police station to provide a contact number. And the purpose of that is, many, well, not many, but sometimes cyclists throw out bottles and trash along the route. So we would like a contact person so that if residents make a complaint, we can have somebody from your organization follow up on that.
Absolutely, we definitely will, you know, make sure that everyone knows at the start of the, of the ride, and it's not a race, just so you know, it's, it's, it's not a ride, it's a pleasure. But we'll make people aware that we're very concerned about any kind of litter. And there'll be several stops along the way that people will have to be able to, you know, get refreshments and water and snacks and, aside from ice cream stops. So there'll be natural places for people to want to deposit their litter, but we'll, we'll make sure we enforce that and certainly provide a contact. In fact, we're going to provide all the cyclists with a phone number so that if they're out, they, they will be able to reach us. And yesterday, your cycle re is actually going to have a support vehicle that'll trail behind and make sure everyone's okay. If someone needs assistance, they'll be responding to that, so. And we'll have, you know, quite a few volunteers out throughout the, the route to make sure people turn in the right direction and so on. Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
Make a motion to...
Motion made in second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Discuss that dates for local, both in location and special town meeting in the fall. What's the board's question? What's that timeline, we have to meet what when?
Warren has to post two weeks before. Have to take into consideration county and moderator schedules.
Can I address the board on that subject?
Absolutely, go ahead. Oh, you can stay there.
And Mike's here also, yeah.
Mona?
In Lauderia.
Come on, Mike, he's getting camera time.
I heard that.
Both Mike and I had seen it on the agenda, so where we weren't approached on this, I talked to him about it to see what dates would be good for him. And we were looking at the calendar, so the first week I'll be on vacation.
First week of October.
Of October. The second week we had is Condes Day on the Monday, so if you wanted it on the Monday, that one would be in. The third week is the fifteenth, I believe, that one... That one would be open. The next two weeks will not be open because I have early voting at the town hall. So that means early voting's still four o'clock. When we close that forum there at least every night until seven because we have to tally, um, all, all the votes that came in that day. So those two Mondays will be up. And then the following week, if we went into November, the Monday is the day before state election, so. And then, um, well, Karen's not there now, we talked to her. And I mean, she, and the week after, I think, is Veterans Day, um, the following Monday. And then Karen needs her figures done. I mean, she needs, she can't wait till the end of November for her tax, uh, figures and stuff. So it almost only looks like if you wanted a Monday, the fifteenth of October would be the only thing open.
Would it have?
It doesn't have to be a Monday. We, we have done different dates. It's, it's up to the board. It's, it's a special town meeting, so.
Tuesday, Wednesday, Saturday, everybody looks at it.
You totally don't. They actually have to show them.
So we were looking, like I said, at the calendar. We're like, oh, that one would be a good week, that one would be a good week. So we just wanted to let the board know what else is-
If we did do the fifteenth, that would set, what has to be done by when?
So you need two weeks prior-
So that's the first.
Right. And then we need to open and close the warrant. So we need everybody to have enough time to do that.
Only twenty days for final vote to set off, so.
That puts you at the sixth of, including weekends, is that, is weekends included? So that would put you at the sixth of November. Would put you at the tenth. Twenty days.
September fourth.
September. Ten, twenty is thirty.
But your, your dates and her dates don't have to, they don't piggyback on one another. They can go inside, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So they don't have to piggyback on one another. So we don't need all that time.
So we can use the two weeks.
Right.
Yeah, her two weeks and the two weeks are so things separate.
You're back at like the twenty-fourth or the twenty-fifth? Yes.
Of September, right.
See, a twenty days would be even easier.
I just need time for you to-
It would be the twenty-four. Would be, I need, so my deadline would be the twenty-four.
Right.
For the final vote.
But that's not for us to have anything on the street, all that stuff. That's, that's for your final, final vote. That's not for us.
That's all I'm saying, it's only the twenty days.
And this would be the, the fall town meeting or just the-
Special town meeting, yep.
Well, the fall, fall is a special. Well, yeah, I'm, I'm just saying, looking at potential to, you know?
On three.
Pardon? Yeah.
Oh, that Mike thing from earlier?
Right. So that's gonna be its own town meeting and then the police station's gonna be its own town meeting.
I don't know when the police things will be ready, though. That, that could be, who knows?
Even at that, as far as the police station, if it's a separate town meeting-
It doesn't have to be a Monday.
Doesn't have to be a Monday.
Right. So I'm not really worried, like-
Yeah.
Not too worried about picking a date for that.
I want to pick a date that's actually gonna be, everybody has, is informed, everybody knows when it is.
Yeah, so it's not gonna be till May eighth or Monday.
It's it more.
Probably.
But that's what we're saying. We can't do it late October because of the, oh, it doesn't have- But it doesn't matter. The whole two weeks of late October, every day is where we vote.
That doesn't have, we don't have to worry about that for Kim or, we can have that first week of November if we had to, whatever.
Right.
It could be during after that.
Yeah. And it doesn't have to be a Monday, so.
The special, though, we need for Kim.
So the first, first month and, uh, I mean, the first week in November, you have the state election, which-
Right.
It's the state election. I've got a lot of stuff to do within that whole week as far as figures to the state and everything. And dealing probably with provisional ballots and everything.
Let's, let's just concentrate on drawing this down.
This is the board.
Yeah, I'm not worried about the other one right now.
Does the fifteenth work?
Yeah, the fifteenth is fine.
All right. Well, we set it for the fifteenth. Uh, elementary school as usual. And what time do you wanna set it for?
Uh, it's usually seven.
It is? It doesn't have to be. It's not, it's not set by bylaw like the special, like the annual.
Could caution you when we were looking at continuances in the spring, most folks were opposed to going any earlier than seven o'clock because of work.
Yeah, I would be opposed to actually, thank you.
So you wanna do seven o'clock, elementary school on October fifteenth? I'll take that as a motion.
I'll make that as a motion.
Motion made in second at the annual, the special town meeting, October fifteenth at seven PM at the Free Town Elementary School. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
You name it, Mr. Bobby.
So let's talk about opening and closing the, um, warrants. So if they have to be posted two weeks prior to the special town meeting, that means that they need to be posted by the first of October. So we need to, uh, they need, uh, they need at least two weeks to work on them, get them reviewed by, by Mark Rich. And our meeting is what, September fourth?
Fourteenth, uh, eight, seventeenth.
Do you want them on the fourth? See, my problem is is if we have them out too early, then somebody's gonna forget something, then we're gonna have to open it and close it again and blah, blah, blah. So do you want them before the seventeenth, Ally, or is the seventeenth good?
Uh, you won't have them picked out too early, I don't think, because if you, when are you thinking of closing them? Do you think of closing them before so that you can review them on the first?
Yes, yes.
If you, yeah, if you review them on the fourth, well, Bob, you're not gonna be at that meeting, so you might not wanna review them that-
Go on.
No.
But if you review them on the fourth, then I have to then compose the warrant and send it to Mark Rich. Mark Rich then has to review it, then you guys have to actually finalize the warrant. So that would give you the seventeenth to review and finalize the warrant.
Okay.
So that would allow you those two meetings. If not, you'll have to have another meeting the week of the twenty-fourth to review and finalize the warrant.
Why don't we open them tomorrow and close them on Monday, September third? No.
That's a holiday.
That's a holiday. On Friday, the thirty-first. Is that not enough time?
That gives us a week, that gives them a week and a half?
Yeah, that's enough time.
Today is the twentieth.
Twentieth. Or do you want to close on the fourth?
I really should close on the fourth.
Okay. So let's, I'll make a motion to open them tomorrow.
Remember that's the state final, what, the fourth?
But that's all he did.
That's just a-
Just to close the warrant, open it.
Close the warrant.
We're just closing the warrant.
Just close it.
Where everybody have their warrant on, hopefully by the fourth.
So we can have it into us by then?
Normally, we don't have meetings on the election day.
We're not, we're not having a meeting on that day.
Okay.
Yeah, no, we're not having a meeting. We're just closing the warrant.
Apparently, we're, we're scheduled to be the fourth.
We're not hav- so you can have them into your office by the fourth.
In by the fourth.
So when you're gonna have a meeting on the fourth? Regular fourth meeting on the fourth? No, on the tenth.
Do the tenth.
No. Yeah, let's do it on the tenth.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll do two weeks in a row.
No, you won't be there the tenth.
Oh, convenient. Thank you. When are you back, Joe?
Um, I'm back the thirteenth.
Um, no, not right now.
Do you wanna have a, uh, schedule, any regular scheduled meeting on the tenth and have a special meeting on, say, the sixth? Just for the warrant review?
But I won't be at the sixth.
You won't be at that either.
Might be, might be basically unavailable from the fifth, to be, yeah, to the fourth.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm out there to bump through the fifth one.
So we get them to the, by the seventeenth, get them in a room by the seventeenth, then what?
So-
That pushes us to when?
Uh, wait a minute. We can still have a meeting on the fourth just to review the, the articles.
Yeah.
We don't have to have a, like a big huge open-
Just need a forum.
-board of selection meeting. We can just review the warrant articles on the fourth.
Okay.
Is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay.
So we're closing it on the thirty-first, review the, on the fourth, um... Okay, I won't be there, but-
You won't be there on the fourth?
No, I can back the fourth. But that, we'll review them. I'll get the copy of them. I'll review them. Any questions? I'll get them to David. Questions or concerns? Um, and that covers everything. So, I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting on today or tomorrow, Monday, uh, Tuesday, eight twenty-one, and close it on Friday, eight thirty-one. At the close of business meeting time.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion on the motion?
I don't want to close it on the fourth, that's why.
Are we closing? I thought you wanted the thirty-first.
That's fine. Then you went back and said, I really think we should close it on the fourth. That's why I was confused.
You're right.
I'm sorry.
All right.
That's why I'm confused.
Charlie, may I amend your, may I amend your motion to the fourth?
Well, co- okay, we'll close it on the September fourth.
September fourth. So motions to open it at, uh, tomorrow, eight twenty-one, and close on September fourth, two thousand eighteen. Any discussion on the motion?
Nope.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Discuss records management with Jacqueline Brown, town clerk.
Did the board have a chance to review the proposed procedures?
I read through, uh, what you submitted to us. Um, I saw you had King, King Systems. We're storing stuff right now physically in the schoolhouse and some down cellar.
I believe the ones down cellar are to be destroyed and they just haven't been destroyed yet. Um, I might be wrong. Kim could answer that better than I could because, you know, they think that's what they charge for, in terms of records. But I think that's why they say there are CXs on them. I don't know if she's trying to get shredded or if somebody's come in and just do, announce it.
Hope, hope.
Because those are some that could be destroyed. What happened is King Information, we've, I've had them in my office, I think it's been since two thousand twelve. And at that time, when they did the town clerk's records and everything, I got the database for the records out. And it's got the retention schedule. It automatically prints out when records could be destroyed. We send that form to the Secretary of State's office and give us permission and, and we get rid of them. And it's kept my shelves empty, you know? You don't have that. That's what happened. I don't know if you've been down cellar in the basement? I mean, you couldn't even walk around there because they were putting boxes on the floor and everything. And what happened is once before, we had the state come down and do a study. And they had gone through, I think they did an air quality thing and they went through and they had said, because we had them all on the floor and everything, they said that was, um, restricting airflow. And so it was causing mold and mildew and everything. So they suggested we get shelving, which we got. And we put all the records on shelving and it's been a lot less mildew and, and mold down there. Because when you go down and, and you work with somebody old, the records, your eyes start itching and everything, you know, there's stuff on there, you know? So anyhow, we went and we got King out for the rest of the town hall's records and we put them over, um, on the school side. Um, and so they put it all in the database that I have in my office. So the control seems to be that it will be there and I have no issue with that. But with that said, um, I don't want people going in there and taking records out and everything that I'm gonna be responsible for. So I set up, um, something that I, I thought would work with the procedures for everybody that has records in there to follow. Um, they want to include, say, the, the police or fire or, I don't think highway has anything in there. I don't think council and agent has anything in there. It's only for the departments that have records in that storage area and that is in our, our database. And I, I'm hoping that I got the selectmen's support in stating that that's gonna be for records and all, and not to be putting furniture in there again and, um, old equipment that don't work. That it's just a place to throw it like it was down cellar because we'll be in the same predicament that we were before if we start doing that. So if we keep that strictly as an area for records, um, I think we can preserve and maintain the records like they should be. So, like I said, what I did is I drew this, uh, stating that the coordinator would be the town clerk and the assistant town clerk. And that any of the offices that have the records over there and everything would flow through our office. There's an archive request form that if they're gonna put a box over there of records, they fill out that, that form. Um, we give them a box, they give it to us. I'd go into the database, find out what the next box number is, where there's a free shelf, put it all in there. And we'd store it in there. And they have a list of where, what they have in there and everything. At the end of the year, I would give them, I would print out a form that would say what records they could get rid of. It'd be their responsibility to contact the state, ask them permission to get rid of them. And then it would be their responsibility to get rid of it. That way you keep the shelves, um, empty. Because some, I'll be truthful, some departments were not doing anything with their records other than storing them in the basement. So there was a buildup of records that could have been, say, had a retention schedule of a year or two. And they're down there for ten years or so, just taking up space and everything. So the, that's why you have that retention schedule. Every department has one. And I have the whole book. Usually they give it to the town clerks. When the new book is out for us to distribute to all the boards and the committees, and I've done that in the past. Um, same thing if they, there's a public records request and somebody wants to retrieve a box. They would fill out that form, give it to me. I'd have the custodian go over there. We have a map of where everything is, tell them where the box is. He'd get it, bring it in, I'd give it to them. They could do whatever they want with it and then give it back to me. But they'd have to replace all the records back in that box that were there, so that way we can keep the database up to, to snuff. I know, um, that some departments are stating that they want to keep records longer than the retention schedule. Um, in case they gotta look back on something. And it really puts the town at a liability. And if you talk to Koppelmann and Page, they teach the town clerks their public records classes and stuff. And they even say it puts the town at a liability in keeping records longer than you really need to. Because once you got that permission from the state, if you got a public records request for that record, once you got that permission, it's gone, then you say you have no records responsive to that request. But if you haven't gotten rid of them and you've got ten years' worth of records that you don't need anymore and somebody requests them, you have to provide them. So there actually is a liability to the town. And like I said, Koppelmann and Pedro will verify that what I'm saying is true. So, again, I hope I have the support from the, if we do go with these procedures from the board of selectmen and stating that they need to follow that records retention schedule. And if not, then the records aren't gonna be kept over there. But not only that, like I said, if they got the records, they're gonna have to provide them. So that's why I was looking at the board of selectmen, had any questions on this, wanted to add anything, take anything off. I think we need some procedures to be in place so everybody is uniform on how they're doing it. And if so, I'm asking the board of selectmen to ratify what I drew up here.
Well, we're not, sorry.
Okay.
We're not gonna know if it works or not until we have a policy and procedure in place. And then if, if there's some holes in it that need to be readdressed or if, if we feel like we have to, you know, um, make additional policies in the, in the procedural methods, then we can do that at that time. So, um, I'll make a motion to support, uh, the town clerk and have these policies and procedures set.
Second, then?
Motion made in the second.
So when you say that, are you ratifying these procedures or?
Discussion on the motion. Uh, besides just the two of you, I personally, I'd see if there's a situation where the two of you aren't available, then the archives wouldn't be available. So maybe the town administrator or some, one other person be included that's not necessarily in your office.
They couldn't be because it's in my database, in my computer. I'm the only one with a database.
The archives are in your computer?
Yeah, there's a record.
Oh, the box on there.
My whole data, it's, it was my database. And when Kim had asked, um, she had approached me and stuff, said, would you have a problem? So we wouldn't have to get another database and another cost to the town just for everybody else's. It should be everybody's records. It should be everybody's records. But if you have somebody else going in there and, the thing is, even in my procedures and stuff, I say that if somebody requests a box and stuff, that within the next business day, we'll get back that box to them and stuff. There's only one day that I know of that we're not, where two of us are not there. And that's when we go to one conference a year, there's one that we both go to.
Having forbid something happens to either one of you, then you're down to one person.
That would never happen. No, but I'm saying normally one of us would be there, but...
I'm not saying to go into computer database. I'm only talking about retrieving archives from the schoolhouse is all I'm talking about.
And again, that is something that if we're available...
Should go through you, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely.
Because if you have everybody with keys going in there, taking their own boxes because they have the printout that I'm going to be giving of where everything is, then it's not going to work. And I don't want to be responsible for records disappearing. There's going to be a bunch of hands in there.
We're actually going to make some improvements in that space and that we're going to put some lights in there.
Yeah, I was going to ask about that.
Electricity, yeah.
Because right now you can't see anything unless you go outside.
Yeah, yeah. As nights, you know, come earlier and it's important at, you know, three o'clock, three-thirty, it's dark out there. You want to make sure you have light in there to retrieve a box if you want to do that. So, I'm actually, I'm going to be talking to EMI, the people that did the electrical work here, about putting running service to the building, putting in lights along the aisles, switches, and also an exterior light with a steel door on the outside.
Okay, motion made in second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
So it gets it. Disgust, concerns with Fire Chief Gary Sylvia regarding Station One improvements.
I'll, I'll give you the, as we know, Station One was built like nineteen forty-seven. At the time, trucks were seven, eight feet high. Now, fire engines are going about nine and a half or better. So, the issue is the doors, the archway, the doors, the truck can't fit through it right now. Just before we get into the discussion anymore, full disclosure, we could get a truck that would fit in the station. But, there's a number of problems. One of the things would be, the truck wouldn't be really big enough for what we want for the next twenty-five years. The other thing is, is that the truck that's in there now is the only one that, in the fleet, that fits in the station. An ambulance won't even fit in the station anymore. So, if we bought a truck that would fit in, in five years, we now, we could have the same problem again. Because no other, because when that, when the engine one that is presently there now is replaced as a reserve piece, the reserve piece won't fit in. And we've had a problem last year. There was no, there was no engine in Station One for between six and eight weeks because they were out for repairs. So, with that in mind, I had Andy DiGialmo look at the station, give us some options. One of the options we had originally thought of was lowering the floor. For the floor, to get it down to that street level, it's only eighteen inches. And once you get the floor of the station down to a street level, now you have the potential for flooding in a rainstorm like we've had recently, never mind a hurricane or anything like that. So, Andy looked at the station. We had hoped one of the options might have been to remove the central column. But that can't be done because of the structure. The central column holds it from racket, sway. So, he came up with this idea of a roll-up door. Roll-up door would go above the door and that way, there would be no brackets, door brackets or anything to impede the height of the ceiling. He believes he could come up with a archway could. The archway that's presently there could be replaced at a higher level. We haven't seen any plans of that, but that's also a possibility. So, the situation is to resolve the problem, it's going to probably cost between a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But that way, we can get a fire engine that will be useful for twenty-five years. And we can put another truck as a reserve piece in the station if we need to.
Are you going to have a true value of that by the fall town meeting?
I would hope so, but I don't know. It's, it's been slow going here.
Yeah.
Really slow going.
I know. Because if you do, then I would put it under capital stabilization, to take it out of capital stabilization. That would be my recommendation.
What, just to clarify, what, you're talking about rounding, squaring off the arches?
Not squaring off, he's talking about raising them up.
So maintaining the arch, just raising it?
Correct. So the problem is with the, the smallest custom cab would fit in widthwise, but if it's square, the arches catch at the corners.
Right.
So if he figures and raises the arches up, he can maintain the outlook, you know, the front of the building. So that keeps the historical folks happy. And I mean, obviously, we'd, we'd all go in that station, probably twenty years ago, we all go in that station.
My concern is when, currently engine, I'll just call it two.
That's interesting.
When that goes down, we have no fire, we have no engine coverage yet. We have that slot, but we don't have any engine coverage for the entire, sort of, the town. The closest piece is here at, uh, Tronero, uh, Bullbrook. So, and this is going to be, you're going to be able to open it up enough to get standard engine in there? It won't be a special design engine?
No, it should be, it could be the standard, the smallest version of a custom.
How many pieces currently you have would fit in that if you opened it up the way you're, the way you're thinking?
Engine two would fit in there, the tank would fit in there. I don't believe engine two, it would just be, has a big, high rack, so.
So that's probably still in there. What about your ambulance coverage?
The ambulance would be able to fit in there.
And when you have storms, sometimes you move pieces around so they'd be pre-positioned so we can get coverage. Right now, when you put an ambulance down there, we have to park outside during a hurricane.
I was wondering if we'd answer when we had the flood, we lost the bridge.
We lost the bridge.
The idea was to put the ambulance down there, but we'd have been inside.
It's a problem. I'd create a warrant article, leave a dollar amount out of it, and we can plug it in even right before that we have to. When we review the warrant articles, but I would definitely put it under capital stabilization. Yeah, so the money's already set aside for it anyways. That's why we save it.
Okay.
Perfect. All right, thank you. You could say if you want.
Just be a liar.
No, no, no.
Ambulance abatement.
Yeah, you know.
You want me to stay for that?
It's up to you.
Well, it's up to the board, you want to stay in the house.
For what?
The board, I remember you.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ambulance abatements. Freetown Fire, ComStar, two community fails. We have ambulance abatements for July two thousand eighteen in the amount of sixty... Contractual allowances for the month of July two thousand eighteen are made as specified in the schedule from ComStar in the aggregate amount of sixty-four thousand, one hundred seventeen dollars and fifty, say, eight cents. Write-offs for the month of July two thousand eighteen to be made as specified in the schedule from ComStar in the aggregate amount of sixteen thousand, five hundred twenty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents for a total contractual allowance and write-off of eighty thousand, six hundred forty-six dollars and fifty-six cents. And a motion to endorse the ambulance write-offs.
I'll make that motion, second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Signed contract with Sylvia Engineering Associates P.C. regarding review of building files. Mr. Town Administrator?
Okay, as directed by the board, I have met with a firm that does basically review work on building plans and D E P files and such. And had requested a quotation in terms of investigating or conducting an investig, not an investigation, but a review of a number of the files that were associated with Excel. And from that meeting that was held, as well as other discussions with Larry Silva, who's the president of Environmental Consultants, we have a price of five thousand four hundred to ten thousand eight hundred dollars. The five thousand four hundred basically buys you forty hours of time at a thirty-five dollars an hour. It's my belief that we can try to hold that to the forty, if not less. If we can try to do that, it may be worth our efforts to at least have someone go through all of the technical and legal requirements that were associated with the file and to ensure that everything is in place and was reviewed in accordance with current building standards.
Discussion from the board?
I mean, I think it should be done just so we can have a better grasp on exactly what went down. But I'm not sure what our end result is going to be after that.
Well, we know what the file's lacking.
Basically a forensic review.
Right. What should be in there that's not in there or what needs to be caught up and where we have to have enforcement and brought up to current status. Right now, we don't have anybody to do that. We don't know where it's.
Probably to lay the groundwork for whatever new building inspector comes in. So, then that person wouldn't have to go through the files and start all over again. So, it would give a groundwork for that person coming in.
Absolutely. I just don't like the variable of it could be this, it could be that.
That's a good swing. I could talk to him about what we can do to keep it just to the bottom.
But I also think that it's going to depend on if that file is lacking a lot of stuff.
Yes.
So that's how it's going to end up playing out.
He did have a preliminary view of the file to see...
Yes, he did.
How, how fulminous it is.
He had a very short period of time to look at the file, but he did actually thumb through the file the day that I met with him.
If you could speak to him and try to narrow this down to...
I can do it on.
Maybe forty hours, I think would be a good start and see where we are in forty hours.
See how far we can get.
Yeah, why don't we narrow it to forty hours and then see where we are?
Okay, I'll take a motion.
I'm going to abstain.
I have a motion.
Make that motion.
I'll second the motion, narrowing it to forty hours. Any discussion on the motion?
No, but just, I mean, after you have the forty hours, if we feel like he's on to something and we're missing a lot of stuff, then we can go forward. I mean, I don't want to start to do this work and then not finish it because, you know, we're a little upset about the cost. So I just want to make sure.
I think we should have a reasonable expectation that forty hours to review a files is reasonable. I mean, I don't, I don't see a lot more than that.
I would say the same.
All right, motion made in second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
And abstain, Charlie abstains for the record. Discuss sign approval of exemption from special municipal employee Laura Ramsden to be placed on file for the town clerk's office. We've discussed this the last couple of meetings.
And you've come to?
We have an opinion from counsel in his opinion. Have you reviewed his opinion?
Yeah, he says it's probably a better idea that they do that anyway, so.
I, I just, I have the same concern I have before. I, in my mind, it's, it's kind of like your interest, but counsel says that we can do that, we can leave that.
And then it would be up to her to go forward with the F S Commission and file the proper people work. If she doesn't, then she's the one in violation. But at least we've done our stuff in making sure that that's not going to happen.
Any discussion besides that? I'll take a motion.
I'll make the.
There's no public discussion.
I'll make the motion to allow Ms. Ramsden to be, well, actually the...
Entire.
The entire Freetown Regional School Committee, we made all special employees.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstain, I, I mean, sorry, abstain and no, aye, I don't know. Discuss approved request for Laura Ramsden to make regional school committee special employees. So that was an exemption for her and this one's for all members. So you kind of did them backwards. So we need an exemption for her specifically. You just made one for all regional school committee members, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
So you need one for her specifically as an exemption.
I'm not sure why, no. We made them all, all special municipal employees. Why does she need?
I thought she, because she has a profit interest.
Yeah.
Yeah, but now that she's a special municipal employee and that she's going to file that, but she needs to do the next step. We don't, I think our part in this is done. We've made all... Yeah, you took the second half of the page from town council.
The board will need to vote. Therefore, the board will need to vote to make the designation generally and also approve Mrs. Ramsden's exemption pursuant to the form she filed with you. So you have to endorse that form she sent last, we had at the last meeting.
No problem, I'll make that motion.
And I, motion made in second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstain and no. Okay. Next, prove town official offices to go gold for the month of September as requested by, being very, he's not here.
I believe the intent is that they put gold ribbons on all town buildings. It's in observance of childhood cancer. And they also have, in October, they have another event, it's October blue, where they do the same thing. This is a demonstration of solidarity and support for all children undergoing cancer treatment.
And they specifically going to put ribbons up in that, that sort of thing?
Yeah, town hall.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Town Administrator support.
Okay, last week I get a call from Representative Tyler informing me that the thirty thousand dollars that was put in the budget for the sewer line study for a sonnet was approved. The money is now in our account. Today I had a call from Christine LaCroy. She is with D E P and she's going to be providing me with the project paperwork and the, I have to put together a project description. She noted that the reimbursables, it's a reimbursable account. We basically have to get an invoice, have the invoice submitted, and then we get reimbursed. Everything has to be done by June two thousand nineteen, so we have to start moving on that pretty quickly at this point. I also have been in touch with Maya, our insurer, relative to having them conduct building inspections on all the town buildings, including town hall, library, highway, fire and police. Basically, my response to this was with OSHA regulations coming in in February of two thousand nineteen, that we can sort of hone in on that to see where we may be deficient and be able to address those concerns at some point, probably at the next annual town meeting. But I'm not only looking at OSHA, but anything that they say that potentially could be an issue that, that needs to be fixed in their eyes as our insurer. I have a department head meeting coming up and a finance team meeting coming up next week. Department head meeting is going to be focusing on training. I'm trying to get a sense from the department heads in terms of what they feel their offices need in terms of training, the safety programs for office personnel, this conflict resolution, customer relations and things like that on the office side. But there's also all kinds of training that's available on the highway side. And I've talked to Charlie, Charlie, and I have discussed this in terms of safety committee and... and getting a committee together to address some of those issues internally. On the finance team, we're talking about the OPEB trust document, and we're also going to have an advisory view that basically, we're at the point now where the period has passed, that the document is going to be officially in place, and now we're going to make the financial decisions relative to how we want to invest that money. We're going to be talking about tax takings, Harper's, which has turned into a little bit of a problem, I'm still trying to work through that. With reference to the personnel module, I also have taken Lisa's advice regarding frontline, and I'm going to be starting to explore that. The Harper's issue falls through at the request of George Runwall, who's a member of the committee. He has requested that the police station financing also be put on that meeting, so if the board, board members want to attend and talk about that, that's an issue. We're also going to be looking at health insurance policy for active and retiring employees, and that, I think, is going to have to involve some kind of bargaining, either an impact bargaining or dealing with implementing policy through the Insurance Advisory Committee. There is a meeting on Friday in Lakeville for town residents. It's sponsored by DEP, but was set up by Representative Viola to address some of the residents' concerns regarding Excel. And I just want to also make mention about Representative Viola, you know, what a great job she did in terms of the thirty thousand dollars and the support and effort that she put into getting that. It's a, it's a real admirable thing, and she, she did a great job helping the towns with that money. Finally, on the interim building inspector, I talked to Eugene Borges today. He's accepted the position. I'm going to be meeting with Joe tomorrow and set some kind of a schedule. He's going to do, Eugene's going to do all the outdoor inspections, whereas Joe is going to basically be handling all of the internal work in terms of office, things that need to get handled. So that's all I've got.
David?
Personal board?
On the personnel board, we have a status change with Megan McGinn, a new probationary firefighter hire at thirteen twenty.
Motion for the board?
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, then next we have a letter from Linda Fornier from Twenty-Four King Philip Way. She's requesting to be appointed to the Totten River stewardship council, the term expiring on June thirtieth of, actually, it should be twenty nineteen, I believe, valley. Correct?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? There is none, all in favor?
Aye.
And memo from Jacklen Brown, town clerk, attaches an election workers list for term from September one, two thousand and eighteen, to August thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. Okay, the list is before.
I'll make motion accept, stating the list in its entirety.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept the list in its entirety. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I just want to make mention for the board of health, we don't have anything on the agenda, but I talked to Derek today, and we're staying on top of the West Nile, especially since there's been many communities, we haven't been hit, but now have been many communities that have been hit. So just a precautionary measure that we're going to be keeping our eye on, and we'll have some thing up on the website for people to do.
Thank you.
Dates for upcoming meetings, we've already discussed, Tuesday, September fourth, Monday, September seventeenth, Monday, October first, and Monday, October fifteenth. And that is executive session time. Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One-A Two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for contract negotiations with non-union personnel, aldermen, or halls, administrative assistants. Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One-A Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the town hall, town library, highway, union, Freetown firefighters' union, signal operators, and police, Freetown Police Union, because an open meeting law may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position in the public body, and the chair so declares. And Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One-A Three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares. Excel Recycling versus Town of Freetown, and the chair does so declare on all three issues. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, we entered into executive session.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Joe's? Yes, we're in executive session.